Good morning, commissioners and madam chair, we're live and over to you.
Terrific. Well, welcome everyone to our first work week after the Labor Day holiday. Good to see everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. This is Chair Catherine Harrington and I'm joined with Commissioners Fai, Treese and Willie. Commissioner Rogers is away on vacation until later this week, I believe, the 7th.
That's correct.
Okay, you may notice that I have a mask on. Yesterday, I received the lucky news that the people who's home, we had dinner at Saturday night, yeah, Saturday night, have COVID. So I figured I'd do my part to try and not
Thank you.
infect all of you. But just a heads up to us all, new variants are alive and well, and please, whenever they have new vaccine boosters for us, please consider that. The flu vaccines are coming up as well, so onward ho we go. I would suggest we mix things a little up today to, on our work session agenda, to make sure that we take care of the Board of Forestry letter first, or do you want to take care of that as part of your, well, actually, it's just FYI, right?
Yeah, it is, just FYI, so yeah.
Alrighty, terrific. Great, we're done. Okay, board communication, who would like to go first? Welcome Commissioner Treese, because you're ready. The rest of us are not.
Good morning and welcome back after a holiday weekend. Let's see, this starts, two weeks ago I was on vacation, so this is just kind of a catch-up from last week, and it was a short, shorter week for me, because I had Monday off as well. We did complete the staff assistant interviews. Commissioner Willie and I were on the interview panel, and the final candidates would become the staff assistants that we share. I just want to report that we've had wonderful candidates, really, really strong candidates, and very pleased about that. I had a briefing with LUT on the West Side Multimodal Improvement Study. The fourth meeting is this week of that, of that larger group, and we'll be reviewing three scenarios of the improvement created by the team for the quarter. We're still waiting on the fourth and fifth options to review, and those, they, they get progressively more meaty, if you will. So it'll be the fourth and fifth that'll be really interesting to see. Chair Harrington and I had a meeting with AOC, with Mackenzie Farrell, Gina Nichol was not feeling well, so she zoomed in. Rob Moody, an individual that they use, a consultant that they use on budget-related issues, was there as well. We really, the purpose was to meet and discuss what the history has been with the increases compared, Washington County compared to other counties, what their thoughts are, what the complexity of that process is. And I, I think it's fair to say, and Chair, you chime in here too, but basically, it's still, it's still a steep number. And we've got to be looking forward to how we can readjust the formula a bit. One of the, one of the places that may have opportunity is in the assessed value column, if you will, regarding to the formula. So we will be discussing this more in Klamath Falls. The Chair, myself, and Erin Doyle are going down to Klamath Falls, September 21st through the 23rd, for the Legislative AOC Meeting and the Board Meeting. So that'll, the whole do structure will be discussed at that time. I attended an e-bike tour with Mayor Beatty, many of her staff and many outsiders, and it was focused really on the fifth and Washington corner there where Kaiser is, all the way down to the Shoals Ferry intersection. It was, it was very informative. She was gracious enough to say that she did take the idea from my Economic Development Bike Tours that I did when I was at West Side Economic Alliance, and we had fun. Mark, Mark Jockers and I did plan the first one together. So anyway, it was, it was a really good event, looking at what the, what the constraints are there, what they're trying to do in relationship to development, but also trying to make that a walkable, transit-friendly type of environment. I went on the Welcome Home Bus Tour on Thursday. I was on the tour, tour last week. We toured affordable housing projects. It was hosted by Welcome Home. It was a, it was one of the wettest tours I've ever attended. It was poured all that day. It was, we were drenched by the end, but it was really, really interesting. We toured two that were metro bond-funded projects, and we also stopped at Habitat Humanities, New Homes in Washington County. So it was very informative, but also good to talk with people from the Hillsborough Council and also from the Beaverton Council as we toured these, these locations. On Friday, I spent the day with others here in this room on the ACA interviews. Again, great candidates and a good pool to draw from, so I think we are well-positioned for the future in terms of our new hires. This week, I have a meeting with Just Compassion, along with Commissioner Fai, and also a meeting with Tanya Steele. She is the owner of the Lone Owl Farm, and that's regarding Ordinance 882. So that's, it's an interesting week.
Thank you. Great. Who would like to go next?
I'll do that. Well, you missed a couple of tours, because Catherine and I were on a couple of tours. You weren't on them, but that's okay. You had plenty to do.
It wasn't a complete tour week.
No, it must have been, it was the time to do that. The last couple of weeks of August were, we were relaxed and a little busy, and so we had.
From kind of busy.
Yeah, I attended the permanent shelter site that the City of Hillsborough is putting together down on the west end with Representative Bonamici and Mayor Callaway and a few others, and we kind of got an update on what that's going to look like as they build that out in the next couple of years. It will house 75 adults, and in the interim, probably some temporary pods will be put there. That's where we had, had pods, was it a year ago or so during the winter, we put up those shelter pods in there, yeah. So we may put some other things in there for a little bit more, longer term. Colin Cooper, if you know Colin, was the Planning Director for the City of Hillsborough, is, has now retired from the city and is our Executive Director for COOPAC. So Colin and I had coffee a couple of weeks ago, and kind of got updated on a number of things that COOPAC is doing, and so it'll be good to bring him on, and we'll be saying goodbye to Arianna, our current Executive Director, this week in the, in the meeting, so there's a next week, I think it's next week. Of course, we had Tom's retirement party, so that was good. I represented the Commissioners.
Thank you.
And all that. Took one for the team, had to go to a winery and enjoy wine and, and hang out with Tanya and a bunch of them, so you know. It was good. Brad, good job on getting Tom nominated for that award, and it was very much appreciated. I think we all appreciate certainly your hard work on putting that together, but wanted to say thanks to Tom on his way out the doors. Yep, Pam and I sat in on staff assistant interviews, and it was good. Went to Cornelius for the opening of the Safe Rest Pods launch. The Chair can talk about that. She spoke there, did a great job. And I tell you, they, they cleaned that place up and did a great job on that, so, so it's going to be very cool out there. I'm glad we're doing that, although not everybody's happy about that, but we'll, hopefully, we'll, we'll convince them that that was a good thing to do. Probably the biggest thing I've got going on right now over the next few weeks is the Board of Forestry, going to Salem on Thursday to testify. You saw the letter in the packet. Catherine and I met with Brandon Persinger, who is the AOC liaison to the Council of Forest Trustlands. He brought us up to speed. The Governor has, has decided to weigh in on the HCP discussion. So I will have another meeting in Salem on the 11th for the preliminary for that meeting, and then moving ahead over the next 60 days to meet, meeting with the Governor to see what we can do. But the Board of Forestry has put out a resolution, and if that resolution passes this Thursday, then there will be no changes to the HCP as we know it, and that's going to be tough for the counties.
Yes, so if I could.
Yeah, absolutely.
Build on that. The meeting that Commissioner Willie and I had with Brandon, who not only is a member of the AOC Government Relations Team, but through our CFTLC dues, he is the, the one staffer for CFTLC. He had started asking a couple of years ago of OBF, Oregon Board of Forestry and, and staff, to provide an estimate of what acreage would be taken out of play with the HCP. We were shown the maps, so he asked for a per-county breakdown. So without the HCP, about 11% of the acreage in Washington County is out of play because of roads, steeper slopes and whatnot. With the application of the HCP, Washington County's acreage has an additional 35% reduction.
And so does it go from 11 to 35% or 11 to 46%?
Correct, the latter. So there are 15 CFTLC counties. Some don't have any acreage, he said, of state forest land, so I'm not quite sure how that happened.
I think I did there, but.
But we are of, I believe, over time, the top, part of the top five counties, and Clatzip and Tillamook generally have the greatest percentage share, and we generally come in third. So that additional takeout, we're 35. One of those two, Tillamook and Clatzip, is like 48, and another is 52. So we're talking high reductions. So this effort is, and the resolution goes to taking the HCP areas and doing further refinement to reduce those numbers. So he also asked, he also provided a rolling fi, or a five-year average and a 10-year average. So we know that this, part of our nomenclature is a little bit hard, not hard to follow, but non-obvious. So we talk about the county distribution. It's not to the county government by itself. It's for all of the service districts, including education districts, fire districts, and so forth. So out of, say, an 11 to $13 million year, we, the county, tend to get 1.9 million, for example. So we're doing the work of helping all of those service districts get revenue. It, all, all revenue that comes to us for our budget is, of course, helpful revenue, and we'd rather not see that, but it's even more significant for those other counties. So that's why, with Megan's help, thank you, Megan, we've tried to make sure that we are knowledgeable about what is being considered and provide voice as the Washington County Government through these discussions. So I'm really pleased that Brandon was able to share that information for us, and Commissioner Willie will do his best, touch bases with us as he's able to, as the Governor's Office explores, what is it that you counties need, so.
So does that 35% equate, is that an indirect relationship to the amount of revenue? Does the land equal the amount of revenue?
Yes, because it's logging, it's logging revenue.
Okay, so it is, it is directly linked, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, our, our revenues swing wildly. In 2017, the total package was only 3.2 million, of which we get about 15%. So the, the special districts kind of took a haircut in 17. In '23, it looks like it's considerably larger, but it's, that's all going to level off. And for, like the Chair said, Tillamook and Clatzip Counties are really, really taking a cut as, as well as their special districts, which are public service and school districts.
And they have more of the industry, timber industry, infrastructure in their counties than we do. More mills, more log truckers, and more of the direct impact as well, which is why they tend to be the leading voices. But we've done the work with help from our staff too, to see that this impact hits us as well. So, yeah, onward ho.
Yeah, this weekend I had a chance to talk to Tillamook Commissioner David Yamamoto, who's the Chair of both the Forest Trustlands and the Council of Forest Trustlands, as well as Commissioner Scar, who is the Tillamook Commissioner. So we're trying to, we're trying to all deliver the same message, so it'll, it'll be interesting. So that'll be what's going on in the next few weeks. I hope we are able to convince them that a few tweaks would make a lot of, a big difference. So this week, a meeting with a consultant who was hired by WCVA for their strategic plan. I'm going to a Fair Board meeting. ALC Transportation and Community Development, I'll be doing that while I'm in Salem on Thursday as well, and then meeting with the representative from the YMCA, Beaverton, so.
In Beaverton.
So one of Beaverton Hillsdale. I met him a long time ago when, gosh, I can't remember what the deal was. I think it was the first year I was with him, sure. And then, yeah.
And that was part of my tour on.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, that's why I was asking. And I.
I think I'm next. I had a question about, good morning, everyone. First of all, happy summer or September.
Happy New Fall.
Fall is coming, not yet. As my kids corrected me, it's not fall yet, Mom, so. I had a question about Commissioner David Yam. What position is he leaving?
He's leaving the county, his, his position.
County Commissioner? Oh, okay. Yeah, I wasn't quite sure. But I didn't, it was a great month of August. Felt was a lot of briefing for me, so I don't really have too much of a significance, other than the stuff we collaborated on to report out. But I'm ready to say I'm glad to be done with the month of August, and I'm ready to rumble with the month of September. I've got two kids, one in first grade and another one in second grade, and then the third kid is starting preschool. So it's pretty exciting school year for us. And the, the third kid is, keeps repeating, I'm going to school, I'm going to school. And he has a backpack ready and everything, so, but I'm ready for future board discussions about, for the month of September, and look forward to those discussions. And turn it back to you, perfect timing.
Okay, thank you. As Commissioner Willie, we mentioned, we had the grand opening of the Cornelius Safe Rest Village. Open Door has done a phenomenal job with the, the help of many other hands as well. The property looks great. It's got a fence around it. It has gathering places. Each of the pods has been improved in terms of circulation, weatherization. Each has air conditioning and heating. Now, for the weather, it's just, it's set up really nicely. So I think the Hillsborough site was a little uneven and looked like the pilot that it was. So where the organization is also moving forward with the second Safe Rest Village in Aloha, using the, the prefab units as well. So onward ho we go. Last Monday was the SHS Oversight Committee. Not a lot to share about that. We did go over the corrective action plan for Multnomah County. We also have the financials for closing out last year, and I actually sub-setted those to send out and forgot to send that out, so stay tuned. I'll be sending that out as well. So, yeah. I think that's it for me. I missed what you said about September, but I want to thank Commissioner Willie for handling in advance those Board of Forestry Governor's Office meetings, but also for being willing to miss one of your two monthly meetings on September 14th, because we have a very full agenda for our, our roundtable on that Thursday.
Yeah, that COOPAC meeting is in Tillamook that morning, so.
So we're not starting early.
Nope, you're starting at 1:00, so I may be able to drive down there. That's Colin's first meetings. I want to be there for that and then drive back, so I'll be back by 1:00.
Yeah, yeah. Do I need to get you a box lunch?
No, that's okay. I think we get one at COOPAC. The one, Welcome Dale Feek back. We haven't seen Dale for a while, so yeah, welcome Dale, thank you.
Yep, so we have one item we're going to check in on, just to see if you have any questions prior to the Board meeting this afternoon. But before we do that, we'll do leadership communication.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. Actually, Chair, if we can stay on the theme of the Board meeting for today, looking at your Board agenda and in consult with the Chair, prior to public communication, we will have a staff presentation on Action Item F2, which is approve the purchase of real property located at 1103 Elm Street. Since there is public comment relative to this item in conversation with the Chair, the Chair had suggested it would be helpful to have that staff presentation as context prior to public comment. It will just be a presentation, and then your Board will take action at F2 as scheduled in the agenda.
So did you want to do that presentation before public comment?
Correct.
Okay.
So it would be between the call, call to order and public communication.
Yep, yep, okay. That's a good idea for people who's on there.
Yep. So then, moving to my weekly.
Oh, and if you could, in addition to that, based upon what we've been seeing in constituent report, there seems to be a rumor flowing that as soon as we purchase the property, we'll be preparing it for another Safe Rest Village. So if you could ensure that in that presentation, it's made, that our community has the opportunity to hear that we have no plans for, for such, and we're quite busy with the two Safe Rest Villages that we're, we're locating temporarily for the next couple of years, and getting the Hillsborough and Beaverton sites up and running.
Chair staff are prepared to speak to that.
Wonderful.
So really excited to share that our county service inventory project kicks off this week. As your Board may recall, the purpose of this project is to develop an inventory of county services, complete with corresponding service characteristics such as funding streams, mandates, regulatory requirements, population served in service areas. The project will develop a baseline of county services, providing a baseline of information for our community strategic plan work. Workplace safety, in October, we are preparing to launch two-hour-long online training courses related to active shooter emergencies. These FEMA training courses for active shooter prevention and response have been chosen to provide training for all staff. Hosted on NeoGov, the training will be integrated into other required training, which is also provided to all employees. Previous years, I did send an email previous to your Board, as well as your staff assistants, to watch for this, for scheduling. I would highly encourage Board members to participate in this training. Additionally, in-person active shooter training is still available for departments who do have this request, and those requests come through our Sheriff's Office. Equity Leadership Council, last week, Commissioner Fai is your Board liaison, and I met with staff on the upcoming agenda for the Equity Leadership Council, which will be held on September 22nd. This is the internal countywide Equity Committee, in essence. The following week, between Commissioner Fai and I, your Board will receive an update, which will include an update on the subcommittee work from the Equity Leadership Council.
And I want to thank your, you and your leadership and due diligence, along with support from County Council, for reviewing judiciously all of our personnel code, as it seemed we hadn't been doing that as intentionally as our own stated need was in, in that said code, so good job.
Well, Chair, to that, there's more work to come on updated administrative policy and what is that review process. So County Council, I almost said CAR, Anderson. Welcome to your first day officially, I think.
Boy, let's see, Angie and Anderson, Anderson comes alphabetically before Angie.
Well, you may hear us slipping. We have nicknames for each other. I call him Lucky Brad, and he calls me A-plus Angie, so. Uh, workforce development, Work Systems Inc. is expanding their worker-focused Clear Legal Clinic to Washington County. The clinic provides free legal services for local workers. Common services include help with eviction situations, immigration, and, and others. The clinic will be open once a month at PCC's Willow Creek Center. Staff is working on a communication to ensure this opportunity is well-publicized and known within our community. Last week, Economic Development staff participated in a small sit-down meeting with Representative Bonamici and other workforce development partners. I did want to provide a quick update on this, because this opportunity had conflicted with your Board schedules. Staff highlighted two programs that are having great success in Washington County. The first one was Driving Diversity. This is a program that trains new truck drivers and pairs them with employment with trash recycling collars here in, in our county. Quick Start, a focused 10-day training that introduces students to work in the semiconductor and advanced manufacturing industry. The program has been launched in partnership with PCC and Intel, with many students finding employment immediately following the program. I do want to just commend our, our small but mighty Act Dev team underneath the leadership of Matt Craigie. I think this just lifts up and highlights just the vast array of work that is occurring underneath that team just in a few short years here at Washington County. And that concludes my weekly update.
Terrific, thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here in my first meeting with you in official Rose County Council. I will share a little bit about the retirement event we had for Tom, since some of you couldn't make it there. Jerry and Commissioner Fai did get an opportunity to speak on behalf of you. At that, at the retirement party, we notified Tom that he did receive the Lifetime Achievement Award from the International Municipal Lawyers Association, which is a really big deal. They don't give that award out to anybody, and Tom has been very active in that organization. They look for people with outstanding leadership skills that have really improved in municipal law across the nation. And so thank you for the Board's letter of recommendation as well. That was very helpful. We also got letters of recommendation from the City of Seattle, as well as the City of Boulder, as well as Tony Angie. So very helpful. At the presentation, we also gave a, Courtney Duke Treese came up with this very clever idea, that was, we gave Tom a 1/11th Lifetime Achievement Award, because he has spent 1/11th of his municipal law time with Washington County. So yeah, so he got, he got that award from us as well. It was, it was outstanding. It was, it looked like something you get, a kid would get in preschool or something like that, but, and then, and then we did, we did a presentation where we said 11 things we've learned from Tom over the years. And as well as there was a lot of other people that had really nice things to say about Tom, and then his wife. And then his wife roasted him.
That was the highlight.
Yes, it was great, yeah.
She was so funny.
Oh, that's great.
Yes.
She wanted to know why we weren't roasting him and we were being nice to him, so she filled in some of the blanks.
Yes.
He's funny.
She is a really funny person and a delight to be around.
Yes.
So where are we as an office? My first official day today, and we are in the hiring process for two new attorneys right now. We have second interviews this Thursday and then hopefully get offers out here soon, hopefully by the end of the week, so that's where we are right now. I do want to share one other thing. I don't have a lot of information on it, but you may hear about this in the news that on Friday, Multnomah County's flavor ban on tobacco, a decision came out from the Multnomah County Circuit Court upholding their ordinance. So their situation was a little bit different in that they had.
A lot different.
They had, they were doing tobacco retail licensing before and our county wasn't doing that. We'll have to review the actual decision, but I just want you to be aware that that decision came down on Friday.
Does it help the argument that the legislature did intend to empower counties to provide such regulation?
I haven't read the full opinion yet because it came out late Friday, but we think so. Our litigator, John Mansfield, has reviewed it and plans to bring it up in oral argument before the Court of Appeals, which was scheduled for November, but now it's been pushed back because of availability of plaintiff's attorney. So I know, it's in the queue. When you're dealing with courts, you work on court time, which is not our time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Clean Water Services, hello Diane.
Thank you Chair Harrington, and good morning Board of Clean Water Services. I wanted to give you a little bit of highlight about the Camp Creek fire that's occurring in the Bull Run watershed. So our team is pre-planning for the potential impacts in the event of a water curtailment in the region that could impact our drinking water partners and triggering a need to really proactively conserve water at Hag Lake for the region. So we are looking at managing our releases and also informing the EQ that we're being proactive. The fire is 16% contained and the Bull Run reservoirs remain secure at this time, so things are stable, but it's something we're exercising our emergency management planning and looking to things that we can do to support the region.
I have assumed that the city of Portland has activated their Columbia wells?
Yes, yes.
Had they already activated them before this fire though?
That I don't know, but I know as part of the fire, they did report how they're blending the two water sources. Yeah, okay. So so far it looks good and that we're continuing to remain vigilant, and it's a really good exercise for us to pre-plan these types of events.
So the rain, the rain that we got Saturday night, which was a deluge of rain for a while, and I don't know if there was an inch or two or whatever, there was a lot. I'm assuming that our Hag Lake water is still at full capacity and we're in good shape there.
Yeah, doing good.
But I was surprised to see that nearby lawns haven't bounced back with that rain. I wasn't here for it, but it just sounded like there was such an impact that told me that the ground has been so dry that it's just returning to sort of normal moisture levels for this time of year.
Yeah, I played golf the next morning and there was no puddles, there was no soggy.
So we have a ways to go, it really has been dry.
Yeah. I do have some sad news. John Michael, a construction coordinator and team member since 2007, passed away from an illness. John is very much missed by the team and we appreciate his dedicated service to Clean Water Services. His family shared with us that John really loved his job and really liked working at Clean Water Services. So the team is doing their very best to support his family and sending our deepest condolences. The team is collecting items of remembrances for his family, and I didn't know if the board wanted to include a card that we can help coordinate thanking him for his service. But thank you, yeah, that's sad. But other than that, the team's doing well, they're getting ready for school for the children, and it's sort of the passing of the seasons now that September has.
And all those school tours picked back up.
Yeah, we're excited.
Yeah, I did have one question that I neglected to ask when Joe was here and a prior Tuesday. With the fire in Lahaina, I was wondering if the drinking water and waste treatment companies, and I don't know if in that community they had such, or if it's spread out for others, but do associations that the agency of Clean Water Services belongs to, do they help reach in to communities to help them get back?
That's a great question. There has not yet been a request by the County of Maui to ask for mutual aid and support, but I'll check in with Adam Crand. Sometimes EPA and others will arrange for folks to help, but the drinking water system was heavily impacted because it's open reservoirs, so the fire, things have impacted it, and the wastewater plant is just, I think, waiting for the power to be restored. So, but yeah, the drinking water is, right now it's not safe to drink, not even with boiling. So, but they're working through that.
What we take for granted in our everyday lives.
Yeah.
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 Okay, good to know. Well, thank you. Okay, so why don't we take care of the Law Enforcement Center item and then come back to see if there are any other questions on the formal agenda? So given that we had to, due to commission availability, a couple of Tuesdays ago, we rearranged our work session topics. I asked the team to come in and provide for an opportunity for a short update, and so we have a short presentation in our packet to see if you have any questions given what is on our agenda for later today, so please take it away, team.
Thank you. Good morning Chair Harrington, Commissioners. My name is Suzie Fulcher, I'm the procurement manager here at Washington County. Today with me are Stuart Stafford, who is a project manager with Facilities, Parks and Fleet Services, and Kitty Kong, who is with our Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement. We're just going to give you a brief overview of the process and what we've gone through with the LAC critical upgrades. Next slide, please.
You probably can't see me smiling underneath this mask.
We're in charge of it. Thank you, Stuart. So this is the timeline from board approval of using the ARPA funding for the critical upgrades through the Intention Award, which happened on August 25th. Everything is pretty much how things generally run with this. On May 16th, your board authorized the alternate competitive process as opposed to low bid. We were able to use an RFP for Construction Manager General Contractor, which is CMGC process, which allows us to utilize things other than price. So we were able to build diversity into that, trying to use local, different goals. We advertised it on July 4th, had a pre-proposal meeting, which is common on July 19th. We did a meeting greet to bring proposers and subcontractors together, which is not something we normally do, so that was something new we built in to make sure that we got the word out and tried to bring in as much community as possible. We submitted, submissions were due on August 4th. Evaluation was the 7th through the 11th, which is very quick, but they did a great job of getting that done. We moved on to interviews with the top two on August 23rd, and then the Intention Award was issued on August 25th. And we'll highlight some of these as we move through other slides. So in the RFP itself, the project goals included quality, diversity, equity, inclusion, phasing and coordination, health and safety, fair and reasonable profit, schedule, and then safety. So health and safety, safety's in there twice, one being more around the occupants of the facility, and the second one being not only ensuring that tools and equipment that the contractors use were managed to make sure that they did not get left or were not available to the occupants, but also the physical and emotional safety of the construction crews themselves, which they've been working more and more in construction with, you know, trying to get rid of some of the old challenges when new people came into construction, the hazing and such. So those were the project goals that were called out in the RFP document.
Will the construction crews need to interact with the current hot water system?
Yes.
Ooh, that's the thing that scares me the most.
But they've done a very good job and brought in some big ideas about how to do that with as little interruption as possible.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over here to Kitty.
All right, good morning. So I'm going to go over a couple of things that we have either introduced or have done a little bit differently in this RFP project. So as mentioned before, we are using a CMGC Construction Management General Contractor, which allowed us to put in more language than we do in other projects that are incumbent on low bid. And for this Law Enforcement Center Critical Infrastructure Upgrade, we're able to introduce several pieces to support these county initiatives, these equity initiatives. So we worked with a consultant who has a history of working with other agencies such as Triment and ODOT and was able to bring in some successful strategies into this RFP process. And with that guidance, we were able to embed language throughout the whole RFP to ensure that the proposers addressed and presented their action plans as a backbone of their proposal. That is an elective. There was a multi-prong approach to direct outreach throughout the county staff as well as community partners, and that helped us cast a wider net. And this is a direct result from continuous outreach and investment over the last couple of years that built the foundation, the familiarity of trust within our community partners. In partnership with the design consultants, Saison, and procurement facilities, NOACE, we held our very first, as Suzie mentioned, our very first general and subcontractor meet and greet. This is something that we haven't done before, and this is a really great way to embed intentional community engagement and community building within the contractor pool. And this project pioneered a lot of these like cross-interdepartmental initiatives, and that is also the spirit of intentional community engagement when we do RFP processes and we do procurement and contractor building within the community. So all the submissions that we received for the RFP all stated very confidently that they were able to meet and exceed our goals. We can go on to the next slide. And this is a little something new. So we also acknowledge that working in the COVID, MWESB, and minority women in emerging small business space poses a lot of barriers. And we also recognize that COVID is not for everybody. Some businesses are, may not desire or may be able to become COVID certified through the state. So working with our neighboring agencies, like the city of Hillsborough, they actually launched on their B2G portal, which is Business to Government, an opportunity to be able to register as a business that is within the Washington County limits. So local businesses that are women-owned, minority-owned, but are not COVID certified. So this gives us a kind of shortlist, a separate database that we can pull from. So we do this in partnership with the city of Hillsborough because we also recognize that there are many, many portals for contractors that have to log in and sign up for, and that's one more thing they have to do. So when we do partnerships like this, it actually helps eliminate some of the barriers.
So the proposals received, as I mentioned earlier, we received four from four very good contractors. The two highest scoring proposers, Howard S. Wright and Hoffman Constructions, were invited to interview. Both provided plans to meet or exceed the county EDI goals, and both provided plans to meet or exceed the project deadline of 1/26, which were both huge things that we were looking for in the RFP. And the evaluation committee that looked at the RFP or the proposals was made up of members from facilities, the Sheriff's Office, the architectural firm, and we had one of our community partners from Latino Built also on that committee. So the interviews that we held were in 90 minutes long. They had 20 questions, 10 of them were given in advance that they were allowed to research and come back with a presentation, and then 10 of them were asked just on the spot in an interview format. Both firms brought strong talent, they represented the project teams very well, did a good job of coming forth with ideas. Hoffman partnered with Total Mechanical, who has a local arm that has, they tell us, many employees that actually reside in Washington County. So one of the other things we looked at in addition to EDI was we tried to stress local throughout the process to keep the dollars within Washington County, and they presented a plan that we think will do that very well. The interview panel was impressed by both, but felt that Hoffman did the deeper dive and had some interesting big ideas already before they'd even gotten the contract. So Stuart's going to speak to that a little bit.
So yes, looking at the schedule, there are two very important dates. It's the beginning and the end, and the end we need to, we need to hit that mark because we will lose funding at the end of December 2026, so very important date. And then trying to get started as quickly as possible to meet that date is, and with your approval, we will try and get that started next week to start the meetings. The proposal, the proposal from Hoffman certainly went beyond what we were looking for and is looking at a 12 to 14-month early finish. So this tipped the scales in terms of what we believe they can accomplish with the project, so.
I just want to say, this is a slide that had me just dancing in my chair because it looks like the project may complete earlier than 2026.
That's the plan, and just to clarify, the first schedule you saw was a schedule that we had included in the documents. That was our schedule from the architect, and this was a schedule obviously proposed by Hoff.
Yeah, I am just thrilled because since we learned of, since the problem was brought to our attention clearly in October of last year, this is one of those topics that, it's not that it's been keeping me awake at night, but boy, have I been worried. So I'll worry until the, you do, yeah. I'll worry till the project is complete and it's working, certainly, but I'm just so pleased that through this process and your engagement that the schedule is looking promising. So everything's going to be crossed all the way to the end. Thank you.
So highlighting one of the ideas that they proposed was to eliminate doing the piping within the building and putting the new system on the roof so that it could all be completed without affecting anything, any of the workers inside the building in that, the long corridor where all the piping is. So there would be, in terms of connecting the new system, it's a couple of days rather than weeks. So we saved a lot of time there. There will be, they will also propose putting a new walkway on the roof that will allow the roof to not get as damaged as it has been over the past 25 years. So we have that, and then of course, you know, saving money so that it could be used elsewhere is another, another big part of this. So anything else, any questions?
I'm just curious, when you have these interviews with the construction firms and they're, you talked about who is part of the interview panel from the Washington County side, but what, who's on the other side? What type of presentation do they make in terms of, is it the leadership of the company? Are there union representatives there?
So when I sent out the invite, I specifically asked them to leave the CEOs and the marketing team at home that we want the people that are going to be. That we want the people that are going to be on the project. Now, they can't guarantee that things happen, life happens. But for the most part, the people that they bring to these interviews are the project manager, the superintendent. And we met the purchasing officer who will help make sure that all of the EDI and MWSB things are met. For, and for both companies, for Hoffman as well as Total Mechanical, they had the team that will be in charge of this project on.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Questions?
Again, I had support with Pam was saying and what you guys said in the presentation here. This has been a great process and congratulations for your being innovative and creative and certainly the DEI fifteen percent utilization. All of that criteria that we talked about, I don't know, a couple of years ago in procurement. And, and about that, you put that into place. So thank you very much for doing that. And it's a great project. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Good work team. So this will be on our agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else for this portion of our work session?